Make sure your microphone.
Yes.
Wait a minute, is there a difference in sitting on one side versus the other? Am I going to just like? Finance team.
Balance.
A more balanced.
Yes, yes. And you have a laptop, so you can.
All right, good afternoon. All this work session is called to order. Ms. Truman, does anyone sign up for public comment? Is there a legislative report? You have a tie. Okay, all right. Let's move then to agenda item two statewide initiative reviews and recommendations. Plainly put, this is obviously it's a public meeting, but our goal here is to just work through some issues related to an outstanding balance in Weah, which is somewhere right around twentyish million dollars. Is that correct?
Correct. It's currently twenty point one million.
Twenty point one million dollars, and this is balances in Weah statewide. I'm assuming this is things we haven't allocated yet plus money that's come back in off of other allocations.
Correct. It's basically three grant years of Weah funding that has either been approved for projects and we recaptured or like for the current program year that just hasn't been nothing's been approved to expend those funds.
Okay, great. All right. So last year, last July, I think it was, we had a very similar work session to this. I thought we made a lot of good progress and had some really good, really good programs that came forth from the work session. Staff had recommended to me and probably the U two commissioners that it might be a good idea for us to do a similar type of meeting again. And I'm in wholehearted agreement. I think, I think we do really good work when we can just get together and talk through the issues. I, I have some proposals for some specific initiatives that I would, I would like to propose. Obviously, I bet you do too. We can do this a lot of different ways, but the way I'd like to do it unless you object is, is I'd like for us to get all of our ideas on the table, then come back around and talk about what money looks like, how much we think it might be. Do some things like that. Richard Trevino, let me put you on the spot, ask you to start things off and whatever proposals you want to rely on, comments you want to make, anything we might want to do before it's yours.
Thank you. Well, as you know, that we had proposed last time, the Foster Youth Network, and we were waiting for RFA to come in. So I just kind of wanted to know if staff could give us an update on where that is. Or when we're going to get the, the answer on who accepted or got the award granted. Our Foster Youth Conference, we didn't get any interest in it. So I'm thinking still in line of foster youth, foster youth internship. So like staff to maybe look into getting something where they could partner with private businesses or transition centers. Provide transportation to and from the internship for the foster youth. And maybe possibly use it as a model after project search. Just something where they could have access to internship for different jobs in certain private businesses in the area. And still in the foster youth, I know that in talking with Commissioner Murth, that it's difficult for foster youth to get IDs. You know, if you're in prison, they have you there to get IDs, but for foster youth, there's a system that they have social workers that are supposed to help them, but I think some of them get slipped through the cracks and they have a hard time getting their driver's license, social security cards, birth certificates. So if staff can look at ways and maybe partnering with the D F P S or E P S or even Social Security Administration to help these foster youth that are going to age out of the system have access or kind of funnel them to ways or different agencies that they can get their identification. And then lastly would be the Grace Conference. I know we had a big success on that. We've been having success. I know a lot of people have asked if we're going to have another one. I don't know if you have that funded. But I would like to see if T W C could host another Grace Conference this coming up year and maybe provide feedback on a post conference survey as well. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you very much, Chris. All right, Christopher Sparza.
Thanks, Chairman. Just on face value, I'm definitely open to Commissioner Trevino's ideas there. Happy to see that those are being looked at. I guess what I'm I've got, so again, three ideas, but again, I think they they're, they're, they're kind of still living in the it depends type of, type of area. In the first round, and I want to stay away from from pilot programs in this, this round, because I think we as long as I've been at there since a year now, there, we, we wanted to address specific needs that we, we knew and we understood. I asked to put three million to civilian transition as a support program benefiting communities with large populations of veterans transitioning. I know myself and possibly other commissioners were approached about specific needs for this. So this is money that we put towards it. If it's being accessed, and that's probably part of the kind of the update, if, if, if we put the money out there and it's being used, if more money can be put in to the, to the program to support the larger transition need specifically, you know, parts of the state that are, are, are looking at this. So I want to reinforce the military to civilian transition support program. If they're, if the money's out there and nobody's taken out of it, I definitely want to know if they're, if they just don't need it or what, what, what's not being taken care of or if there's a hurdle for them to get access to this fund, which I don't think there is. So if so, then reinforce that if we can, if we can put more money towards that, that initiative. The, I, I did like, there's Mary, I think there were some ideas that were put wide or that were put into supporting, let's see, the idea of statewide initiatives to develop mobile training labs, meeting with different organizations across the state, even with our local workforce development boards. Some of the partners that they have, I've seen a lot of good that, that's being done to, to, to have these mobile labs, especially beneficial to rural areas where where testing facilities may take required, you know, two and a half hours to get to and from in rural areas. So we'd like to see some kind of, if that's a procurement or if that's a, something that we post out for people to, to have existing or some, some other program that, that isn't here in the state of Texas currently. And also anything that we can develop to continue to, to explore our Texas Intern Challenge website that has a portal that I think may be stagnant, maybe funky, for lack of a technical term. If there is an area where we can what I would like to see. Speaking of Louisiana hunting, you know, I think Louisiana Spirit added the ability to have like their hunting license connected to their driver's license. So this is like a credential wallet. And I know this has been explored in a lot of different areas to have to continue. I think we're, we're doing something with I think we're doing something with Higher Education Coordinating Board with the tri-agency to, to have a library and to, to ensure that. I'd love to see some kind of connection or technology that runs interns that are getting into the program or some type of credentialing wallet can follow them or a locker, whatever you want to call it, can be implemented into this, 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 this portal. So between the employers and our interns that want to get access to this, to maybe put some money into making this platform more usable, more dynamic, help, help with with connecting interns with, with employers, but also more of those wraparound services that provide interview question types of stuff that, that interns can, can, can visit and get specific coaching, utilize blockchain AI, all the fun words that go into things that I wish I had when I was looking for my first job. But those are my three.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me expand on your internship concept because I, I also had a concept relative to internships. I think that, you know, we see a couple of things coming out of internships. It's, it's obviously a great way to do career exploration. It's a great way to, to really see what it is you think you might want to do in the workforce. I think you also gain some really tangible skills that can carry over. But I think the other big benefit of interns, the percentage of people who hire their interns are very fairly high. I've hired two of my interns already just since I've been here. And it's just, it is a great way to get to know somebody. You can watch them in real time gain the skills that they need. And I think that for employers, it's an incredible tool as well. I think it's, I think it's the strengths of, of the challenge website and Texas interns unite and some of the other things that we've done. With, with all respect to you, Christopher Sparza, and certainly Commissioner, former Commissioner DeMerson, we've done a lot in this space. I don't think we've done enough in this space. I don't think that we've probably scratched the surface. And I think since we're looking at a, a good balance of funds, my proposal would be this. When I look at the success of our apprenticeship programs, when I look at what we've been able to do relative to, I mean, when you look at the unworkability of the federal registered apprenticeship program in terms of the paperwork and all the things they make people do. The number of employers that use it is a large number of employers. I think that's because T W C really helps coach them through this really lengthy, bulky federal process. That's a real testament to our team for them to be able to get that kind of interest from employers on the registered apprenticeship program. I think we will see similar success on our state based, industry based apprenticeship program. And those are, those are equal. I mean, it's if you want an apprenticeship program, get an apprenticeship program. Whether it's, whether it's, you want it federally registered so you can work off of something else. You want a state level one. We give a lot of options for apprenticeship. Can't deny the success. Apprenticeships is incredible for, you know, I mean, it's an incredible program. And we move a lot of people. But when we talk about certain other jobs, you know, when we, when we talk about jobs that really aren't craft trades or really aren't specific trade skills that you need, apprenticeships become a lot less useful to people training in those deals. And I think internships becomes the tool that they're going to need. I, I would really like to see us increase our funding for internships. Expand our eligible applications to include the educational institutions that are helping these students get these internships, work with local businesses or any businesses who are hiring these interns. In other words, increase the stature of our internship programs so that it is in some ways proportional to what we're doing relative to apprenticeships. We can't deny our success in apprenticeships. I think we can learn from the things that we did relative to apprenticeships and take several of those tactics over to internships and see the same kind of success for people at universities. Whether that's state universities or community colleges, maybe even some other training programs. And, and really looking at things like how, what's the salary experience for interns? Was it a paid internship? How does that work? You know, what courses are they getting credit for at school? How do these skills translate into the labor force? I wrote, I say I wrote, I had a great team that helped me write some papers here on just some, just some basic thoughts on the expansion of this internship program. This is just a basic outline to get this to Mary. And that this particular, this particular expansion really just lets us model things we've done in apprenticeship, bank off of things we've already done relative to internships. Increase some money. I'm particularly interested in looking at wage supplements. I'm particularly interested in looking at significant and meaningful outreach programs. I'm particularly interested in looking at better outcomes for students. So I have, both of my kids graduated in May, one from law school. She, the law firm she works for today is one of the firms she interned with as a law student. So she, she actually got her first job because of her legal, one of her three or four legal internships. My younger daughter did some pretty incredible internships. One of which was a congressional internship in Washington. She actually got a job offer off of that, didn't want to move back to Washington, can't say I blame her. Lived there five years, I did my time. And you know, she would have, I think, gotten that, that it was, that internship experience really served for her to understand, you know, what she did want to do professionally. She didn't have a lot of options for, for internships at Texas Tech in the Communications Department, which actually is known for its internships and has a lot of internships for students.
Yeah, they're, they're decent.
They're, they're having a hard time finding companies that want to do the internships in conjunction with the colleges. So my, my, my sort of idea here, this concept here is kind of based off some real life experiences of my, my youngest daughter and her friends who did internships, which, which would have led to, to jobs, but they didn't have the full range of internships. In other words, she didn't get to do an internship in the, the subject matter she was actually interested in because they just didn't have a company that wanted to do that. And I think T W C can do an awful lot. Whether it's UT or Texas Tech or A N or U N T, just pick your school, Angelo State, I don't care. Even, even Sam Houston State. We, we, we can go in there and really be able to help those that want to be helped. Make connections with employers. The boards can help with this. We can really set up a program to do that. So I think you see where I'm headed with that. It, it, it's really just us expanding our efforts on internships. Not just limiting it to a, what's, what's, it's a decent portfolio. You're right. We need to probably spruce that up, but I think we can add some things to that that'll really help move us in the right direction. The second thing I really want to talk about today, I'm passionate about those internships, but I think the proof's in the pudding on this next one. Our, our teacher externships I think are more successful than we're probably even talking about. We do talk them up. I think Steph's done a good job of really talking through what's going to happen here. But I, you know, I probably would say we're probably not really getting all, all the juice out of this squeeze up that we probably should be. I think we've allocated about 1.3 million for teacher externships. My understanding is so far we, we've had about 900 teachers participate, or at least in the last round. That, that somehow translates to some, you know, five figure number of students that have benefited from this. I believe that too. But when I look at all the anecdotal and other data relative to teacher externships, one of the things that I see is that longer externships where they're in there for 10 days, 12 days, 15 days. It's not this three day, you know, kind of in and done kind of thing that their classroom experience really does improve. And the things that they're teaching students relative to a particular trade. I know of one course down the valley, it's construction. I, I've talked to the teachers. They really did come back, find the applicable teaks and start teaching new techniques for their construction students. Because like this is a viable, this is a viable thing people can do for a living. I want my students to learn this. And the school's committed through their C T E program, make sure those students get the requisite certificates that they need and the various licensures so that they can actually start working in construction immediately. I, I think the schools that have participated in the longer externship programs and the teachers that have stayed committed to that, I think are really showing some anecdotal results. Enough that I would say T W C should really consider expanding this program, expanding the financing and perhaps even expanding what we expect from these teachers. You know, I'd love to see the longer externship programs, you know, perhaps that requires some agreement on some, some summer stipends for teachers to do this. I'd love to see commitments by the school regarding their curriculum and how they'll move forward with the students. So I, I've captured all those ideas here in this quick little draft. It basically lays out everything I've just said. Thank you. It, it's one of those things where I think, I think we're doing something well. We had already moved from pilot to something more on teacher externship. But like the internships, like the apprenticeship programs, I think, I think this is where we're making a meaningful difference and can move the needle on not a couple hundred students, but several thousand students by talking to a few hundred teachers. And so as we consider through this, you know, I hope we'll consider that. My third idea was, we, we call them soft skills here. It's workforce readiness tools. I was at a Dallas Independent School District facility on Monday. They have incorporated soft skills into their C T E system. Dallas has four regional C T E campuses for students studying almost all C T E programs. Two things they require of their C T E track students. You, you have to get a license, so you have to take the right number of courses where you can get a license. That helps them satisfy a state requirement. Also makes sense for the student. Real example, in their auto technician course, there are 14 certificates you need to go be an automotive technician. Dallas I S D ensures that students who complete that program have all 14 before they graduate from hospital. They're actually ready to go to work as soon as they graduate. But two of the things they require is a course on soft skills for which there are already teaks written. Schools can implement that immediately. And the second thing, they, they make them take a course in either a, a full course of study for the entirety of their C T E program in either Spanish or German. Reason being, they have discovered that the technicians that work on machines that people use are either German or, or speak Spanish. And so they want them to be able to converse with the people who come in to fix their equipment or, or folks that are working at the job site with them. I, I find that absolutely fascinating. And I met one of the Spanish teachers who was from Argentina. I met one of the German teachers who was from Germany. And I met the automotive technician, teacher, flight services instructor, construction people, welding, incredible campus. We've been talking about soft skills for some time here. We've been hearing from employers, I, I have, so I know you have, you probably have too. On, it's like the number one thing that they think that their young people that are coming into the workforce are really lacking. And it's this thing called soft skills. I asked the Assistant Superintendent Dallas to send me the teaks for that course. He did. I read it. It's all the things we've been talking about here at T O C. So high schools can already do this. High schools are already doing this. I don't think they're doing it in a broad enough way that employers are seeing what they need to see in the pool that they're hiring from to fill their workforce. And so you know, once again, I think this is an opportunity for T W C to fill a role. It's a, it's a really good niche for government, which is, we don't have to distort the whole marketplace in order to make an intervention that speeds things up for the people in the marketplace. Here I'm talking about both employers and job seekers. If, if we can get at the high school and community college level, if we can put together a good course of study relative to soft skills, I think we can provide a module for both high schools and community colleges to use that will increase the chances of job seekers filling one of the jobs that employers are desperate to fill. I, I think this is a good twofer. It's one that really helps us be able to move in and do that quickly. At the same time, I think there's some other opportunities in the marketplace. So while I think schools are doing a good job and it's our obvious kind of point of entry into this to provide this intervention to make everything more efficient. I think there's some good, they're, they're, they're nonprofit, but private sector organizations that have some real good courses of study here as well. Junior Achievement has a really good course of study. The Y M C As are doing work in their after school programs relative to this. And I think this would be an opportunity for us to look at this two ways. I, I think one way we can look at this is making monies available to public school institutions. Probably ISDs, community colleges, probably specific campuses, maybe educational service centers, if that makes sense. I think it's a good avenue for school based soft skills training. But I also think there's another real opportunity for us here to do some type of application process where these verified third parties, if, if we like their curricula, if we like the way they're working with students, perhaps they're even working with students in some partnership with a local school district. I'd like for us to really look at a way to fund those types of enterprises as well because I think it gives us a second bite at the apple. So if they're not going to get it at school, they can get it after school. Maybe they can get that kind of training at school and then get a really good refresher course after school or in the summer. What I've discovered is, is, you know, it's like, not everybody had the benefit of my mom who may just straighten up and fly right. And my mom's, she's busy. She can't get around to all the schools in the state and teach this course. So I think we're going to have to get something local, something where businesses can be involved, something where employers can help determine this curriculum and then schools can do what schools are really good at, which is teaching student. That's, those three are kind of the main things. Workforce staff, it circulated a couple other ideas to kind of kick this conversation off. There, there was a couple of those I liked. Not, I guess not enough to like put them on my priority list. But, but I think, I think they're more complicated and I, I think they deserve a little bit. I think they deserve a little bit more attention. One of the things I had jotted down is, I, I think the upscale Texas program has been working. You know, I think if we wanted to increase funds to the upscale Texas program, I think that would be warranted at this point. I, I, I think we all know what the upscale Texas program is and we can see you know, how efficiently they've spent the money and what we're getting for that. So I, I think that's not a bad investment. And then we're hearing a lot about water wastewater training and the need for technicians in the water wastewater space. I'm probably not in favor of it if we just do water wastewater. But I think there's some other, I think there's some other things we should combine with that that are also kind of sometimes public sector, sometimes private sector jobs. I think emergency medical technician would fall into this category where, you know, communities, whether it's a volunteer fire department, volunteer ambulance service or a paid service. Private, public, it, it occurs a lot of different ways, like water and wastewater infrastructure. This type of emergency medical technician infrastructure is the kind of thing that you don't want to find out. You don't have enough of at the moment. You find out you don't have enough of it. You know, when I miss the last step on my deer stand and tumble all the way to the ground and need a ride to the emergency room, I, I don't want to find out they want anybody to come. That's not the time for that. And I don't want to find out they want any water to kind of wash that wound a little bit before I got there. It's kind It's kind of things I think about. It's a rural issue, but I think it's also an issue uh, in any rapidly growing community where they just don't have enough of these kinds of technicians. So I, I, to me, it's just not, uh, it didn't seem right to me at this point, but I don't, I don't want to lose this idea. I think this notion of hard to fill infrastructure kind of positions like water wastewater technician, EMT, there may be others, I'm sure there's others. Um, I think we just might want to think through that just a little, a little bit more. Uh, there's more, but I think that's, I think that's probably enough for the day. Let's circle back around on these and let's circle back around on these and, and, and think about funding. We can do this a couple of ways. Um, we can sit here today and, and try to divvy up the, the $20 million. Or we can use a time honored TWC tradition and that's where we kind of punt just a little bit and ask staff to go do the math for us and we bring it back to us. Well, that seems to be a popular position, so. No, I, 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 I think that's fair because they can try to understand what the costs are and what the, what the push-pull is between what we're trying to do here. Understanding guys, if, if there's tiebreakers, we're gonna have to be the tiebreaker.
Of course. I, I thought you were gonna say arm wrestle.
I've been training, yeah, I've been training, just in case we did that. Um, I don't, I, I certainly don't mind doing that. I've laid out my three, looks like Commissioner Trevino, I had three or four for you to come up with, bro, that out.
Well, I think the first one was just like the information, uh, about the, uh, Foster Youth Network, just to see where that was. But, uh, I think like, uh, my first one would have been the Foster Youth Internship kind of line with what, uh, Commissioner Spadis, you had said on internship, maybe they can be combined.
Sounds like they can be.
Yeah, and then, uh, just the other one was, uh, the looking at staff to get ways for ID for Foster Youth. And then again, the Grace Conference. And, uh, again, staff can look at that and come up with how much, uh, funds they think they need for that. And they can arm wrestle for that later.
Yeah, I, I, I actu- yeah, I think you're right. I, I think that's the way to have, unless you, unless you have a different opinion, but.
No, I, I appreciate it and, and we're, we're definitely aligned on the internship. Now that I've kind of seen kind of, like I said, a year works in here. We're gonna be stepping up our initiatives for, uh, conferences, our, our intern conferences. And a lot, kind of more aligned with our conference for employers. We get, you know, we're, we're probably not gonna be able to do 16 and 18 like we do TCEs. But if we're in areas that we, we can prioritize, um, an internship conference prior to the employer conference, um, we're gonna try to execute that and make, make good of a, of a, of a travel out to those areas. Um, and on top of that, the, the, the mobile labs and then TBD on what, what's being used with the veteran money right now. And that's, yeah, that's great.
I, on those, I, I did have a question for you, I, I, I was gonna ask you before we get out of here. So we'll let staff assemble this, combine these ideas where it makes sense to combine them. We, uh, assign a dollar value to it, this will come back for, for our review and action and, and I'm not covering, probably not. Mr. Trump, we're probably not in another work session, probably we can just slide this into any, any regular scheduled commission, that's perfect. Um, I, I do have a question for you though about mobile training labs. So I, I, I am concerned and I would not like to see us invest in third-party kind of existing things.
Okay.
Um, i- if we have a choice. And, and what I mean by that is this, if, if we, if we're thinking to ourselves that we want to empower, you know, one or all of our workforce boards to build, you know, some sort of mobile training facility.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, a mobile office facility, a mobile job counseling facility, like whatever it is. Um, and we think that's important, uh, yeah, I, I, I think there's some uses for that. I, I know of a couple of third-party kind of national deals that are going around the state trying to solicit dollars for their program.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, TWC is gonna get almost no use out of that. TWC is not gonna get any kind of training use out of that. The ones I've seen are, seem to be just simply awareness kinds of operations. Uh, I, I, I would not like to see us just funding some third-party's operations so they can do what they were gonna do anyway. Um, and I think then this business and industry does fund a lot of those. But I think everybody's always looking for government money to do that. But if your, if your concept is, no, we need, we need like mobile labs that boards can take around, we can go to a community, maybe do a course, we can go to a community, maybe do one-stop kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think if we, if we maybe canvass what boards, boards are doing already.
Yeah.
If that was one thing, if there's any help in, in assisting them to, to, you know, any boards that, that it would fit, is, is this one-time dollars? I guess it would be, right? These are discretionary, these kind of use.
Well, it's one-time dollars until it turns out to be a really good idea.
Okay, and I think the mobile issue, uh, most of the boards that can afford it are doing. They're doing, yeah. One, but they're using it, uh, Corpus has one, cause I had to, and asked when the hurricane season hit, who had mobile labs to help with displacement workers and, uh, uh, the ones that can afford it do, do.
Okay.
The rural boards that, uh, need mobile apps, they don't have the infrastructure because they need a driver, they need somebody that's certified. But they're using libraries, uh, uh, city government buildings that have internet access to put a computer where they can get ac- you know, people can get access to, uh, TWC stuff. So I think the rural areas are already doing it, so I didn't really even see that. Like I, I think it would be more of a problem if that involves a mobile app. I bet and just putting the boards kind of do that.
All right, any, anything else? I got a couple more things that I just wanted to bring out. Uh, do you think there's Commissioner Trevino any?
Are, are we gonna talk about the ones who really want Mike on this one?
You can talk about them, go right ahead.
Well, I mean, like what I said about the mobile app would be the only one. I wasn't sure, or I didn't really understand the micro-prediction of the soft skill. I understand the soft skill aspect of it, but I didn't, I don't really agree with the, uh, micro-prediction.
Well, I, I agree with you on the disagreement on micro-prediction. I, I, way I read that, I, I think Steph was looking at ways to, for students to be able to demonstrate that they had soft skills once they enter the workforce. I think there's some other ways to do that, so I, I don't think you and I are very part, part on our feelings on the micro-prediction.
Right.
Um, I, I am kind of leaving space in my mind. If we find out that, that schools aren't able to give them some type of, you know, adequate proof that they've got it, you know, we, we may want to look around on that a little bit, but I don't. We've not really been in the credentialing process, I'm, I'm second sure, I won't jump in at this moment. Other concerns?
Um, I think that was it. Um, investing in the future workforce board, I didn't really understand how that was gonna work. So I wondered if staff could kind of do a further brief, but it seems like they want to do a cohort for, uh, workforce board staff to, to get trained. And then how are they gonna, are they gonna be statewide and then go to different areas? Or I just kind of wanted to know, uh, background on that because what I was reading here and what I looked at, there were a lot of questions about, uh, uh, turnover too, if you have somebody in a cohort and then they don't want to go to a certain area. That one just also didn't kind of make sense to me.
Yeah. I got it all, mom, let's keep it, no, no, no.
And that's all I have.
Yes, sir, of course, we're sorry. Other comment?
No comments here.
All right, um, do you last thoughts then? Um, I am asking, I'm requesting staff to look into some kind of legitimate alternative for work in Texas. We need a good product, mostly for state agencies to use. Obviously, we're gonna make some of them to stay application for a couple of different reasons. We've been talking about the lack of both efficacy and efficiency for work in Texas for quite some time now. I think we really need to start looking at our options. And, uh, my request is, is you look into those options and, and come back to the commission with recommendations at such time that you, you've been able to investigate all those thoroughly. S- secondly, at the appropriate time, and I, that may not be soon. Um, but I would like to do a top-to-bottom in-depth evaluation of all of our programs funded with both WEOA and TANF. Um, look at how they're performing, have a solid discussion on the performance of those programs. Understand those that need funding increases, understand those that need funding decreases. And if we need to make some tough decisions about merging some programs or eliminating some programs, um, we need to do that. I'd like to have a work session at some appropriate point to go through all of these WEOA and TANF programs and have an honest and very informed discussion on how we want to proceed with all of these. And look at our total body of work at TWC relative to these and how those are performing out in the state. And I would, third thing, um, just looking for some kind of, of briefing on the MyTX Career App, how that's being used by our education outreach specialists in their work. Uh, particularly with high school seniors who are entering the job market and how that particular tool is, is being used as a way to help students do, uh, more career exploration. But we can do that as a, as a briefing, I don't think that needs to be in the commission. All right, uh, last chance for comment.
I agree with you. Yeah, fully support, thank you.
All right, anything else, uh, for us today?
Chairman, just to uh, follow up on Commissioner Sparsa's comment about whether this is one-time money. Just to give you background on how the funding actually works. So for WEOA adult dislocated youth, we get a federal grant every year. The grants last three years. Uh, for adult and youth, 85% has to go to the boards through the allocation process. Uh, five, 15% stays at the state level, which 5% goes to, uh, state, um, admin, which is basically kind of us in the room. Um, and then 10% usually goes to statewide activities. Uh, every year you develop a budget and, and come up with a plan to spend most of that. So, um, this 20 million that we're talking about specifically to your question, it's a mix of both. Some of it is recurring money that you'll have a chance to speak at in the future. And then some of it is funds that are at the third year of life that we need to spend by July. So you can almost think that it's, it's one-time money, so it, it is a mix of both.
Okay, well, I, I did have one question I, I brought up since we can. Is it, would, would it be July that this money has to be allocated by?
No, so our, our current, if you look at how much we spend on any given month and project that out through the end of June, when the last, when the oldest grant will expire.
Yeah.
We probably need, of this 20 million, we probably need at least 3 million of expenditures by June 30th to fully spend the oldest pot of money, but not all 20 million.
The, the only pressure is on the finance staff is to figure out what category to put everything in. I mean, right at the end of the fiscal, that's what, that's what Chris says we're blocking.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I, I heard a couple of requests for status update um, on the Foster Youth Network, on, um, transitioning, um, military service members. So we will provide briefings to all three offices on the status of those items. The next update, um, as well as, um, to the point, Commissioner Sparsa, um, if, uh, we would recommend additional funding for that particular item.
All right, Mr. Trump, I got all my boxes checked. All right, one last thing. Uh, and I, and I'm, I'm, this next part is, is possibly the most important part of this whole meeting. Our staff work, whether it be workforce division, finance, any of the other divisions. Our staff work on meetings like this one, discussions like this one, our overall discussion on spending priorities, budgetary decisions that we have to make as commissioners. Our staff work on this is as good as I've ever seen it at TWC. I'm very proud to be able to work with these folks. We get good information, we get it timely. We get the hard facts that we need to know, we get it in an unbiased kind of way. So I just wanna, I just, wh- while I'm still on the record, I just want to, I definitely want this on the record. Staff, thank you for doing the kind of work that you're doing to get us the kind of documents that we need for us to make the kinds of decisions that we're asked to make. This is not always an easy job. Um, these two guys just make it look real easy. And, and it's, it's because we get the kind of backup documentation that we need to do that. We're not always gonna agree with you, I'm not always gonna agree with you. But I, I'm just, in the five or a little over five years that I've been here, the documents that I'm working from are quality documents. I'm able to make really good decisions and I appreciate the work that goes in that because I know it doesn't just happen in one month.
I agree.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I'm sorry.
Then move saying to adjourn, that votes unanimous and we're adjourned.
No, we did forget to talk about.